This is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting Wednesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven oh six now. In anticipation of the extension of Executive Order two thousand and twenty-one zero four, the Nottingham Planning Board will be holding a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access contemporaneously to listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. I do want to bring up a couple of points. One is if you, all public should be on mute. Please keep yourself on mute until either called for by myself or the secretary. All board members are, please stay on or off mute. And if you need to get one of ours attention, there is a raise your hand button. I'm not exactly sure where that is, but we'll find that. So where I was at was trying to roll call for who's available. So let me go back to that. Ed Veal.
Present.
Susan Mooney.
Here.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Gary Anderson.
Here.
Tyler Eaton. Robert Davies.
Here.
Leanne Gast. Okay, so Tyler Eaton absent, Leanne Gast absent. That means I will seat Robert Davies into one of the open seats. So it'll be a voting number. All right, are we, I think we're ready to go for the agenda. There is a few changes that have been requested for the agenda. The first one is the applicant for Tammy DeFrancesco, the trustee of the Cabota Trust. Their agent has requested that we shift them first. We have gone through, I'll go, get back to that reasoning. And then we were notified by the applicant's agent for Isle Ridge Builders that the agent may not be present for the beginning portion of this meeting as he's presenting at another planning board meeting. So he requested that they go last. So I'm allowing case two one zero zero three S I T to go first, case two one dash zero zero six S I T to go second, case two one zero zero four dash S U B to go third. Is there any opposition to that? Okay, thanks. So we'll start in on the case two one zero zero three S I T. This is an application from Tammy DeFrancesco, trustee of Cabota Trust requesting approval of water cross event to be held three times a year starting in two thousand and twenty-one. Property is located at two fourteen Raymond Road in Nottingham. It's identified as tax as map sixty-nine lots eight and ten. And this was, this appeared at our last meeting, and based on some of the communication that we had with the applicant and some of the board questions regarding use, we've reached out to our town's attorney to get some clarification on jurisdiction of the planning board, specifically regarding the use of commercial property and a change of use of commercial property. And I forwarded the board that information, and the applicant also has the reasoning that we would, at this point, should be turning this over to our zoning administration or our zoning board. A change of use is not something that the planning board is authorized to do, and we don't, it's not within our jurisdiction. So where this use, although the previous use has been commercial, it has been used as a gravel pit. The use changed to a commercial water cross event is not currently authorized. So they would have to seek a variance in order to get that approved and for us to be able to move forward with the site plan approval process. So that said, we were contacted earlier by the applicant, and they requested an extension, or I'm sorry, a continuance until the Z B A meeting, after the Z B A meeting. So they have requested a continuance to May twenty-sixth. And that extension would be outside of the current sixty-five day approval clock. So we would also need to extend that. So what we would need to do tonight is we, as a board, need to motion and vote on sending this to the Z B A and based on the information that the town's attorney provided us. And then also the extending the sixty-five day clock. So we would need the vote to send it to Z B A and then a vote for continuance until May twenty-sixth. I would like to have any discussion if members of the board feel like they would need some discussion about the information that was sent out.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. Just a point of clarification for, I guess, for the applicant is, will they work with kind of staff to try to determine what variances, what sections of the zoning they may need to seek variances for so that they can avoid like repeat trips possibly? Or is it kind of on them to determine what sections they may need a variance for?
Well, you know, our office or the planning and zoning office should be helping them and guiding them. And if they want some additional assistance, you know, I would hope the Z B A chair would provide some of that.
And I don't want to say that there's possibly that the current lot that's not the gravel pit that's proposed to have some camping on it for this, that may also needs Z B A relief. It's not just the one lot, it's possibly both.
You're correct, yeah. I mean, the change of use, as I indicated in the correspondence, that went from gravel pit to the residential that had a, I guess, a twelve month window. And so that current use, the authorized use right now is residential and no longer carries the commercial use for gravel pit. So to change it from residential to something else, whether it's commercial water cross event. But yes, if the applicant is planning on using that for any portion of the event, which it sounds like, which it appears in the site plan is that they'll be using that for day camping and possibly some vendor spaces, then both should be a change of use, both lots.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mrs. Mooney with a question. At what point would it be appropriate for the planning board to schedule a site walk on the property? After the Z B A?
Yeah, I would think that in order, so there wouldn't be two site walks with two different boards that we will request and maybe recommend having a joint site walk with both. And so we'll wait for that Z B A to schedule it, but we'll let them know.
Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other comments on it, if someone would make a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, go ahead. Point of clarification on the possibility of a joint site walk, where I think that makes a lot of sense, but to make sure that we don't cause any problems or delays on it. Like I know the planning board, we can't schedule a site walk until we've accepted the application. I'm not certain on the zoning process. If they can schedule a site walk before they hold a hearing, they can. I'm seeing a nod, okay. So I don't know if it would make sense at this point to try to, for us to schedule the site walk and notice that it may be a joint site walk and have a specific date. That way the Z B A can possibly make that same date. Because otherwise, we won't, I don't think we can schedule a site walk again until we hear the case again on five twenty-six. Because we have to, we can't act on a case unless it's noticed ahead of time.
Sure, okay, well, that makes sense. Do we want to propose a date and see if the applicant is able to make that happen or allow us to?
Steph, what's the, I mean Joanna, what's the date of the, what's the anticipated date of the Z B A meeting?
May eighteenth.
Dirk, can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Um, is the board going to actually decide which variances are going to be required tonight? Or is that going to be left up to the applicant and staff to decide? Because I think it may be better if the board, you know, at least gives guidance on what areas of the zoning ordinance explicitly need to be.
Okay.
Did I understand that right or?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know that we have each. Pardon that. I'm not sure we have each section identified. I guess I would say I'm not prepared to identify each section. It would be a change of use. So I mean, that's the primary variance. I also don't want to state only specific variances, and there'll be one more that we didn't state. So I'd like to have the applicant work with the zoning department to make sure that what they're applying for will be appropriate. And if they want, if you want a joint meeting with myself and Z B A chairman, we can make that happen. But yeah, let's avoid having to go back and forth any times. Let's just do it right the first time. All right, so we'll leave it to Z B A staff and consultation with the planning board to determine.
So that brings back to the potential, potential setting of a date for a site walk. It's light enough now after work on weekdays. So I don't know if people prefer a weekday than a weekend. Weekdays, yes, I've seen some nods. So I'll throw, I'll put a date and time out there and see if the applicant's representative, if it works for them as well. The date, so I move that the planning board hold a site walk for case twenty-one dash zero zero three dash S I T with the possibility of it becoming a joint site walk with the zoning board on May twelfth, it's a Wednesday at five thirty P M.
Second up.
And that's our planning board meeting date.
Oh, it is.
Oh, Sue. How about revise, I made my motion to May fifth at five thirty P M. That way, in case there's inclement weather, we can reschedule.
I'll take my second back and change it to fifth.
But.
All right.
We may, Mr. Chairman, before we vote on it, just to make sure that that works with the applicant as well.
Yeah, if the, Mr. Allard or if the applicant specific could comment on that.
I'm good with it.
Okay, well, we can have some logistics and arrangements with you outside the meeting. But yeah, if you could have at least yourself or somebody available, at least to show us the site on that day, that would be great.
Absolutely, what time?
Five thirty P M.
Okay, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's a motion, a second, and I think we got confirmation. Nor the discussion, I'll just do a roll call vote. Ed Veal.
Yes.
Sue Mooney.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Robert Davies.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so that's the site walk. So then we need a motion for, to move this to Z B A.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to, to case for case twenty-one dash zero zero three dash S I T to be referred to the zoning board under recommendations of, well, as discussed, and also to continue the case to May twenty-sixth, which would extend the sixty-five day deadline.
And roll it all right into one, thanks, Gary.
I second.
Any other discussion on that? Let me roll call, Ed Veal.
Yes.
Sue Mooney.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Robert Davies.
Yes.
Okay, chair votes yes. So for any of the public in attendance, what this means is that you will be re-notified for, by the zoning board for that meeting that this will be on their agenda. And then you are also notified that the continuance of the site plan application at the planning board is continued to the twenty-sixth of May. You will not receive anything in the mail about that continuance for the planning board. I just want to open it to the applicant if they have any questions at this time. We're really able, you know, able to meet outside these meetings, to coordinate any of the, you know, make sure that everything's prepared and all of that. We can consult with you guys.
I think we're all set, Chair Brett Allard of Bernstein. Chair, unless Scott Frankowitz or the applicant Tammy DeFrancesco has any questions. I think we're good, and we appreciate you accommodating our, accommodating our request.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to the next case. This is, my agenda back up. So this is case number two one dash zero zero six S I T. This is an application from Wade Demarche, the owner of Precision Cut Lumber LLC, requesting a site plan approval for a sawmill and furniture production business. The property is located on Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire and is identified as tax map four, lot one, sub lot one. We have received the plans, we've gone through a review, conceptual review. Let me bring that up, sorry. So this is an application that originally went to the planning, I'm sorry, the building inspector, building permit was issued, but then the next step of a site plan application was not done. So this is just making sure that site plan is submitted and goes through the approval process. And that approval process, you know, has shared responsibilities. You know, we act as a board, we act as fairly as possible. And then the applicant needs to be prepared and be able to understand the regulations. I know there has been a little bit of back and forth with staff and trying to get as much information as possible onto the drawings and package itself. Let me pull Steph's report up. And everybody should have received the review letter as well as the application material. This has been notified also to the Barrington Town Planner. It is an abutting lot to the town of Barrington. And the applicant has submitted a septic design plan, proposed building renderings and a number of waivers. And, you know, as I indicated, the code enforcement has determined that the commercial use does need a site plan approval. Steph, I guess I'd ask you to go through some of these and just clarify the waivers that were prepared. There's a number of waivers. And I think, should we go through these one at a time? Or? I guess I'd, I guess we'd really just need to find out whether we can accept the application and then kind of talk about those waivers after that.
Yes, so as Dirk mentioned, there's a number of waivers. But I think, I think what has been submitted is enough to make it clear what the purpose of the application is. And my recommendation is to accept it as complete.
Yep. And we're going to work with the applicant to, you know, I think we understand, like you said, what is being proposed, but there are some specific information that we'll need to have on a plan because that's what we base our decision on. So, you know, we need to have sound information there. So we want to make sure that gets transferred onto the plan. But I agree that looking at the plan, we can understand what is being applied for. I guess I would ask if any planning board member have questions or comment about the acceptance and ultimately if there's a motion to accept it.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we accept the application for case twenty-one dash zero zero six dash dash S I T as complete.
Second.
Second from Gary. Any other discussion?
I have a question, Dirk.
Yep.
So what I'm gathering from this is, you know, we can determine that it's complete in the scope of we understand the, what's being planned for the lot. But in regards to the level of details that, is it basically, we're just, you want us to make a determination if we think the plan itself is complete enough to act upon or?
That it's, that it's complete enough to entertain our review.
Okay, so we, all right.
So we.
I just want to confirm the intent of that before.
Just to accept the plan so that we can now discuss it, its merits.
Yes, got you, I just want to confirm, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let me do a roll call, Ed Veal.
Yes.
Susan Mooney.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yeah.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
And Robert Davies.
Yes.
Vote, chair, chair votes yes. So the application is accepted and we can now hear from the applicant and convene the hearing. So I guess I would just ask if the applicant can be unmuted and you just describe what is being proposed and when, what the plans are.
Hello, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Um, I don't know. I guess I'm a little camera shy.
That's okay, if, yeah, just all we need to do is just if you would, I mean, I think we understand what's going on, but if you can give just a little bit of background of the business and what you're planning to do on the, on the lot, that's, that's really all we're asking.
Okay. Right now, all I plan to do is the front of, I know it's a huge lot.
Yeah.
Just the front section, like about three hundred feet up into the property. For the last four years, I've been operating on one twenty-five in Brentwood next to Ralph Mahoney and Sons. If anybody's been by there, they probably seen us. We didn't have a building, we had a quantity, temporary structure. We saw it outside, I make custom furniture. And I do a lot of custom lumber for people. Three car garages, horse arenas, people come to me with blueprints and say, wait, how much to cut all this? And that's what we do. We don't take up a very big, you know, footprint. The building is nice because I can do the custom furniture, river tables and such. I believe you guys, some pictures were sent over to kind of show you what we do. And, you know, that'll help us grow as a company, actually having a heated building. We weren't, how do I say this? All right, I didn't plan to set out and buy this place and then move into it. Where we were leasing, we basically, they sold the property. They knew for a year that it was being sold on such a date. They sold the property, the new tenant came over and said, here, you have thirty days to get out. So me and Kayla, my girlfriend who worked on this, we've spent since October packing up about five acres of property and trying to get it all moved over to Nottingham before we lost it all. So I've been really under the gun here. Paid for the septic design, the plans of the building. Know they're not very detailed. I was hoping to go one step at a time, we're kind of in a hardship here due to the pandemic. No loans were available, we had to pay for everything cash and that's just about gone. And so we'll kind of start one. I can continue my company. We had a, my electrician got a permit for the electrical work, it's ready for the final inspection and that's when everything got stopped. My mill's electric. I'm just looking first of all to get started, cutting some wood to get some income in to pay for the rest of this stuff. Civil engineer wants $40,000. When I bought the property, there was this note that was attached that said the wetlands out front were drenched and filled and that's the only part of the property I want to use. I know there's wetlands out back. I'm not interfering with them at all at this time. I just, I'm kind of in a jam here as to where we go from here.
Yeah, well, we'll appreciate the effort that you have to go through and we'll work with you as best possible to, you know, try and get through this. So I understand that you have a building that's built?
I have a Quonset hut.
Okay, so a temporary place for you to get started?
Structure, yes. And, you know, it sits on blocks, it's a metal frame with canvas cover.
Okay.
That's what we've used to protect our stuff for the last four years, but it is an op yet, it's just sitting there.
Okay. And is that the building you're planning on utilizing moving forward or you?
I also want to build a new building. I just don't think we're there yet and I don't expect it to even be built this year. I would like it to be, but the wood we're going to use to build the building, I got to cut.
So you got to have a place to cut it?
My hands are tied right now. I thought I was getting electricity on, I cut the wood, I have a kiln that needs water and electricity. We, we used to use the tractor trailer, reef tractor trailer.
Mr. Demarche, are you still there? Cut out.
Well, it's with Woodstove in Brentwood. I financed a kiln prior to the, oh yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, you just cut out for a second, but we're following you.
All right. So I had ordered a kiln and when I ordered the kiln, I didn't know I was going to have to move.
Okay.
It's been sitting and I've been making payments on it.
You might want to turn your, stop your video, that might improve your internet.
Those are the two things I need right now. Is that better?
Yeah, we can hear you just fine. Yep, are you still hearing us?
Yeah, it's breaking up, I don't know what's going on.
Okay, it might just be a bad signal, I'm able to hear you clearly. And other board members, Ed, you can hear me, right? Okay.
So you might want to call in to the telephone number instead, it's on our agenda. If you can hear me, it's 301-715-8592.
Sometimes leaving the meeting and coming back will help too.
You know, let's give it just another minute.
Yeah, this is Susan, he's going to need the meeting ID as well.
Good point.
He won't be able to log on unless he has that.
Well, he had the information to log on the first time, so.
There he is.
It's going to unplug him. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you do break up again and we can't hear you, you can always call back in like on a regular telephone.
Okay, I only caught the first three numbers the last time, I got 301.
Go ahead, Ed.
And you need the meeting ID, which is 994-3489-3266.
All right, well, let's, we'll try and keep it as, I guess, brief as possible. So we have a number, well, we have a couple of plans and what we need to get to is some plans with a little bit more information on them. And I'm not sure, and it sounds like, you know, you've contacted a couple of professionals. I'm not sure if the surveyor is still working for you or the person that did the septic system, but there is just some basic information that's needed such as, you know, driveway widths, some dimensional things.
I put that all in with the statement, they gave me the permit for the temporary driveway.
Okay, I'm not sure that we, I don't think I've seen that. Joanna, do we have that information? The state permit information? Couldn't quite hear you, Joanna.
I don't have that, I think.
Okay, if you could provide us that information?
I will, I will do that.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be helpful and there's, and we want to reduce the number of waivers that you're requesting because that's just probably too many waivers for us to grant comfortably. I think we can, we can help you maybe outside this meeting or after this meeting in a, in a separate meeting where we can get the plan to where it provides enough information that the board would be able to make a decision.
Okay.
And then I think we could reconvene in the next meeting as a whole board and then be able to, you know, get a full decision for you. And I guess I'd ask for input from any board members if they can add anything to that.
That sounds reasonable, have Mr. Demarche with Joanna and staff to reduce that long list of waiver requests.
Yep.
I would agree as well, I didn't know if also maybe the code enforcer had any, anything that would help.
Yeah. Well, let's, Joanna, if you could maybe coordinate after this meeting with Mr. Demarche that, and include me, I'll join in the meeting as well to just go through those sets of plans. And maybe Steph, you can join us as well, just to make sure that we have all of those waivers and if, ultimately, if there are a few waivers that are still necessary, you know, the board will consider those. But yeah, we understand that, you know, getting businesses up and going is important to a lot of people. So we'll assist in any way we can. I think at this point, let's, let's continue this until the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I have a question if I can jump in.
Sure.
I mean, I guess, I kind of, there was a couple of things I just wanted to throw out there. First of all, I, I'm really glad to see this coming here, I think it's a great use for this corridor, first of all. Ideally, I would love to see this stamped by a professional engineer because it's a commercial site plan, but I also understand that everybody's swamped right now and it's hard to get anybody to work on this stuff. Some of the stuff though, is I just want to make sure and, you know, I think this for a septic site plan, this is a good amount of detail for a septic site plan. But I'm hoping we, like Dirk mentioned, we can develop it to get a little bit more detail on there, even if it's just graphical or verbal via notes. I mean, one of the things, I drive by this daily and just one of the things I've noticed is that, you know, there's some proposed tree lines on here that, I mean, there's been far more trees than that cleared on the lot and I just also want to make sure we capture waivers because the one that I flagged that I was a little concerned about was our stormwater requirements, which I know there's a waiver granted for, requested for it. And I think there's, I mean, there's been a pretty large area, almost the entire width of the lot has been touched in some fashion. So I just, I don't want to make sure as we develop, if this is going to be our base plan, I want to make sure we try and capture some, some protections for this area. I know the wetlands have been possibly disturbed in the past, but I just want to make sure it's, everything's recorded on this plan, so hopefully we can work through that. And then ultimately, I just want to make sure that, I know you said you had a temporary DOT permit, but I assume you're working through like a formal driveway permit for DOT?
Yeah.
And that's more so because I've heard of people that don't do that and then all of a sudden the state comes out and blocks the driveway.
I did pay an engineer to work on this.
Yep.
I'm trying to keep the cost down because, but he can't get to it for a while. And Landry is still working on this. He knew a lot about this property, which is why I hired him. He's been on this property since the 90s. And I believe in the conversation I had with him at that time, he was a wetland scientist. He was all licensed and everything, he said he gave it up. So I had talked to him originally about this, like he said, I don't think they're going to make you, you know, do all that civil engineering, wetland scientist stuff, you don't have a big enough footprint. So that's why he said, I'll put as much detail on the septic plan as I can. And so that's why I submitted that as, like I did.
Yeah, and I just, I think my thing is too, is I think this, I think it's a great layout and I think the building looks great and I love the idea of the custom wood. I assume in the, I think like you said, in the future, you might develop this lot out that I don't want, you know, we just want to avoid any issues in the future where you come back for an expansion and it's a problem for everybody.
Yeah, that's going to cost a bit of money and that's down the road, I mean.
Yeah, and I get that that's timing, but, I mean, I have some notes Dirk, I don't know, I'm willing to also jump on and help if there's anything I can help do on the side and I'll make sure there's no conflicts or anything like that, but.
Take all the help I can get.
Yeah, I think.
I'm willing to jump in on that and try and help out.
Yep, I appreciate that Ian. Yeah, well, maybe we just, I'll include you in a meeting with the applicant.
I can make it, I can make it time.
And that way we can, we can narrow down what is, you know, the important information for our board to be able to view and vote on. And maybe we can even provide some direction to his professionals of, you know, what those limited information is so that that can be done a little bit more quicker and efficiently.
Yep.
But yeah, let's, let's determine that in a, in a meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal, I do have a few questions before we continue, just to kind of get a better idea of the business. So one thing I think as a board, we need to confirm is, is this considered commercial or is it considered industrial? We have definitions of both and in the commercial industrial district, we have permitted uses and we, I just think we should look and see where that falls. The only difference being between commercial and industrial, the biggest difference being is the setbacks. Separate from that, just some clarification from the applicant as to like the business itself. So there's a kiln on site or proposed on site, is that operated off, I imagine propane?
No, that's electricity.
It's electric kiln? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a vacuum kiln, it's a pretty new state of the art kiln.
So that, that's great because that answers that because if there was a lot of tanks, we'd want to kind of get an idea of where the location is.
Trying to get away from the fire hazards.
And right, fire department usually want to know that too. And then this, if you're going to be sawing on site, I don't know how often the saw runs, that would probably be something that people would want to know is, you know, is the saw going to be running eight hours a day, five days a week, weekends, or is it one of those things where you, you know, it's run a couple hours a day as you have orders and or?
Yeah, I mean, this, I don't think I've ever put eight hours a day on the saw, but I get big orders, you know, sometimes I, you know, but I do several different things and I have to break up my day, there's only two of us. But I got to mention, it's not a diesel motor, this is an electric saw. It's the quietest saw you're ever going to hear. We could run that and have a conversation standing next to it.
And it's outside, right? It's not housed?
Yeah. It's not, I've had it outside for four years. The Quonset hut that we've had all our stuff in, I wanted to turn that into a shelter, you know, for the saw when I build the new building, you know what I mean? So I can put all my other stuff in the new building and, you know, not have to take the day off when it rains.
And then you, you sell this service or you sell?
Yeah, I have a base of about 600 return customers in the Rockingham County area.
Okay.
And I get about 20 to 30 calls a day right now.
Do you do retail out of your, do you have retail-ish services out of this or anticipated out of this building or is it all custom order?
Yeah, it's all custom order and like the deliveries, most of my stuff's done online and I deliver the wood out. I don't like too many people in there just due to liability. It's, I, if, if people come in, we shut the middle down or whatever's running gets shut down, I agreed to figure out what they want, I'll talk to them, but I just don't like people in around.
And then, and then for the lumber itself, the trees, you, the raw material, do you usually, do you plan on taking harvesting that mostly from on site or?
Oh, no, no, no. I buy all that. I usually go right to log in sites with my log truck, pick it up myself, bring it in. I select what I want that way. And yeah, so, yeah, I do most of, I do a lot of wood, I probably should, but I like to be right hands-on from start to finish.
And then you'd mentioned water for, I think the kiln or for one of the items, is that a high intensity water usage or is it?
No, no, it's actually very low and even the kiln's only a 60 amp.
Yeah.
My, my electrician said that's really nothing, but it just needs some water for the, I'm not really exactly sure how it works, I haven't even got the machine yet. My, my electrician said that's really nothing, but it just needs some water for the, I'm not really exactly sure how it works. I haven't even got the machine yet. I just know they won't drop it off unless I got a licensed plumber working on it to, to hook it up, but it's not supposed to take that much water at all.
And not a lot of, uh, because I know one of the photos that was sent in showed at the table and I think it was just epoxy resin in, in the middle. So not a lot of like chemicals onsite or?
No, 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 that's actually a food grade epoxy. It's the only thing I use. Trying to keep liability down. What can I say?
And then the only other thing I noticed just as a takeaway on the, uh, the 4K area that was shown, there's, there's supposed to be two test pits in that area. And there's only one that was put in the, in the 4K section. So at some point I think they just need to get out and plop in another test pit within that area to make sure that it meets that.
Okay.
And to go along with that, Ed, I think where you were getting with the commercial versus industrials, that's going to affect that front setback, right?
It would affect all, it's 150 foot.
Well, it's 150 from the front, 100 from the sides, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Which obviously I want to make sure we don't have you provide a site plan where the, the buildings within a setback. Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we can talk a little bit more about, you know, I mean, we, we have permitted uses as retail and wholesale and
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Whether it's online or in person, if, you know, if he's selling a product, I mean, that is retail in my mind.
That's right. Do we need to make that? That's where I was kind of going with that is we need to make that determination now. So we kind of set that.
We don't have any industrial uses and I guess I'd have to look and see whether we have an industrial definition.
We do. Yeah, we define both.
Okay.
Once you use industrial use in that, the other problem or step. Trippy point with that is if it becomes determined as industrial, then it, it's only allowed by special exception.
Is Millworks industrial or?
Yeah, that's why I gotta kind of think we just have to determine or hash out.
It does state facilities for the manufacturer of goods in the definition.
Okay, well, let's, I don't want to take up tonight on trying to figure that out. Let's, let's have that as another discussion item. So then we have this continued. We'll, we'll just make sure the definition of which is used. Okay.
And I believe the building inspector felt it was commercial if that helps, but so we can try to touch base with the building inspector and see what.
Yep.
Who's had a little bit more time to speak with the applicant to, uh, see, you know, get his opinion on it.
Well, yeah, and I almost defer to that because this might be just the building type. You know, because if it's an industrial, it probably kicks in some different codes and yeah. Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Let's move on.
So do, are you looking for a motion to continue this to the next?
Yes.
All right. So what do we, the 14th, yeah. I guess so, just to confirm. Dirk, right, like I said, I can help with this and I assume we'll try and get this meeting scheduled as soon as possible. So we can try and hit the next meeting.
Yeah, let's coordinate with Joanna, maybe even as soon as tomorrow, provide her some open dates that we can collectively meet with, meet together.
Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to continue case number 21-006-SIT to April 28th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Veal.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question on this interim meeting. We have to be careful as to how many planning board members are there, correct? Or else it, it becomes a public meeting.
Correct. So it would be, I think Steph, maybe you know, I think there's two of us.
I believe two is okay. I'm gonna, I made a note to look into that though.
Yeah, I think it's three, but.
Just to be safe.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll make sure we're in compliance.
Yeah.
At that point.
Okay. So we'll just vote on that. So Ed Veal.
Yes.
Susan Mooney.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
And Robert Davies.
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay.
All right. So Dirk, well, between Joanna, you, me, we'll just get in touch, touch with, uh, Mr. DeBanci.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll move on to the next case. And I do see Mr. Barry in the attendance. So this is case 21-004-SUB. Application for Owl Ridge Builders LLC requesting to subdivide a lot into two separate lots for two single family homes. Property has frontage on both Stevens Hill, Scenic Road and Deerfield Road in Nottingham and is identified as map 52 lot 10. And we've received, I guess based on our last meeting, we had a number of questions and we've received some newer information and Mr. Barry, if you could just step us through that, I know we have a letter. If you could just maybe step through that, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, sir. Uh, so for the record, Christopher Barry with Barry Surveying and Engineering, and thank you for the board's indulgence for my multitude of meetings here tonight. I do appreciate it. Um, so at the last planning board meeting, there were a few small plan changes that were requested and then some additional changes that sort of required us to expand our plan set. I tried to put together a succinct letter. And I'll just try and briefly move through that. So the, uh, one of the original questions was that we put together a, basically a list of how we comply with the requirements so that it's not incumbent on the board to sort of fish around on the plans to find that information. Uh, so we prepared that chart. Uh, that information is also located on the lot and then is loosely annotated around the plans. The chair brought up a, a pretty good point that our wetland delineation note uh, said wetlands were delineated, but none were found. So they can't be delineated if they weren't found. And so we've asked the wetland scientist if it was appropriate to just note that the project site had been reviewed and the date it was reviewed on. And that, and what, uh, what requirements it was reviewed for and that no wetlands were found. Stevens Hills, Scenic Road, uh, and so that should be noted, uh, in the roadway description. And a note I think was discussed at the last planning board meeting, that a note be added to the plans. And that, um, the policy for the town of Nottingham. Scenic roadways should be adhered to and should be placed within the deeds for the site. Um, so we've added a few additional sheets. The last plan set ended on sheet two and there were two proposed driveway cuts right here at the center of the, uh, boundary line, which is required by the zoning. Now we've removed that, uh, we've added, uh, direction for the user to go sheets, go see sheets three, uh, five, four and five. And we've now provided for an easement plan to place the driveway at the center boundary line. And I'll show you in a second, uh, but we've also refined the easement, uh, that would be granted to the town of Nottingham for grading and drainage. And so those changes were spurred by uh, the request of the planning board to place the driveway, one driveway cut at the entrance to the lot, uh, the lot corner. And then provide a proper site distance profile for the driveway entrance. Which is to then comply with the modifications that the town road agent asked us for. Uh, he asked that the stone wall be, uh, removed and reset. And a ditch line proposed and that this area be graded back so that you could have a proper, uh, sight line up Stevens Hill Road from the entrance, uh, to the proposed driveways. And so we prepared a sight line profile for that purpose. Uh, 10 feet off the edge of the sideline, uh, back 10 feet and then 375, looking at 3.75 feet tall. Uh, we ran it out 200 feet. Uh, your requirements only are for 100 feet. But, uh, we felt that, uh, given the request of the, uh, road agent, uh, that 200 feet was probably more appropriate in this instance. And if we're going to be there doing the work, uh, and going to the effort of reestablishing where that stone wall would be. Um, that if we could achieve a greater site distance, um, then that was appropriate. Additionally, I would just note that, that regrading will not only aid, uh, the site distance at our proposed driveway. But will also aid in the site distance along the horizontal alignment of Stevens Hill Road. So I think a few of the planning board members probably took a, a trip out there. And anytime that you can peel back and widen out a, uh, horizontal curve, uh, and drop that elevation down, you've increased the site distance along that curve, uh, as well. So there is an enhanced level of safety that's now provided. Um, the, um, regrading within the swell line, uh, then requires that a culvert be installed. And, uh, because that level of work is taking place, we thought it was appropriate to at least note some really basic sediment erosion control, uh, notes and details, uh, on plan, on the plan so that we don't have, uh, ditch lines getting silted up and, uh, a new back slope. Eroding into the right of way. So those are now proposed on the plans also. Uh, the only reason we provide a driveway, uh, design profiles, one, we need them to determine the elevation at which we're entering onto Stevens Hill Road. And then there was just some question, uh, more conversation last, uh, meeting about the grade entering into, uh, each one of the sites. And so we were able to demonstrate that, uh, the grade, uh, coming into each one of the sites is manageable. Basically because of the way we're, we're entering, uh, onto the Stevens Hill with the, with the access easement at the entrance. Uh, that allows for us to follow grades a little more closely and less chopping of the slope as we just enter in, uh, to each one of the lots. The, uh, one of the project managers in my office, uh, did go to the conservation commission Monday night. Um, there were a couple of things that came out of that. I'll touch upon a few. The, um, the driveway culvert was discussed. Um, the, my impression of the meeting was that the conservation commission would like to see that increased in size. Uh, and a box culvert was actually described in the meeting notes. Um, that, that makes a lot of sense in other applications, uh, or other applications of culvert use. Um, but not necessarily in an application for a roadside swell use. Um, we designed the, uh, culvert based on the size of the small subcatchment that comes down to it. So uh, there's very little stormwater, uh, basically at this point is where it turns from a fill slope on the roadway to a cut slope. And so really we, we have a very limited amount of water coming down into that roadside culvert. We certainly feel that, uh, 12 inches is sufficient and 12 inches allows us to maintain a proper cover, uh, over that culvert as well. And, uh, maintain an outlet, uh, swell that's reasonable without having to come all the way down the slope and, and basically re-carve and reshape, uh, more and more of that swell line. So uh, we would respectfully submit that our design, um, is, is adequate for this use. Um, and then any larger, uh, design standard to be used would require even further altercation, uh, no, not altercation. Alteration of the, uh, of the area, uh, that we're trying to, uh, to minimize in. Um, the reason that we went to the conservation commission was to, uh, establish and review the number of trees that would be removed. My estimate is that there's about seven, uh, trees in the area. There are two large oaks that would be in the area of the driveway cut. There's one large white pine about, uh, here at the apex of the easement. The rest are dead, um, or dying, uh, ash trees. And so um, the, in the rest of the area through there is kind of a low lying, uh, younger growth, uh, scrub shrub type material. And so there isn't a whole lot of, uh, large value there in the wood material. The applicant, uh, has worked with the road agent and is very willing and is now, you know, ratified on this plan to reset the stone wall, uh, that, uh, is placed here. We would note that we would need to stake that out in the field. So it went back in the location that it was taken from and the conservation commission actually had a good idea. Uh, in that, uh, a photograph for two or three should be taken and, um, that way they can ensure that uh, the wall looks approximately like it did, uh, prior to, uh, its removal. Part of the conservation, uh, commission discussion was the, uh, potential to move the driveway about 30 feet, uh, in the southern direction. Um, I would respectfully submit to the board that that really, uh, it doesn't have that much of an advantage. Uh, first it takes the driveway off from the common boundary line, which poses a zoning issue. Um, but secondly, if we move this 30 feet down slope and came approximately 10 feet off, uh, the, uh, sideline of Stevens Hill Road. Uh, that doesn't change because of where we're on the, uh, complete apex of this horizontal curve. That really doesn't change much. The amount of material that would need to be carved out. Um, in, it would change more of a site distance as you enter, uh, Stevens Hill at the top of the sight line. But because you're at such an acute angle here, uh, it really doesn't change what would have to be modified in this area to achieve the same site distance. Um, so I guess I would just submit politely that modifying the location really does not change uh, the disturbance that would, uh, that would take place in that area. Just want to move through the rest of their notes quickly. I think those were the the highlights of, uh, the conservation commission's notes, uh, the rest of which um, are already fully noted on the plans, how we intend to, um, deal with sediment erosion control and, uh, stabilization methods on the slope itself. So, uh, I guess with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that the planning board might have for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody, uh, planning board member have a question? Comment?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, Susan.
I didn't know if I was on mute or not. I would just like to say, um, um, thank you, Mr. Barry. You captured, um, um, the items that we had addressed at the Monday meeting with the conservation commission and um, that the two to one slopes have been recommended to be, um, decreased. Uh, by the road agent when that was a concern of ours at, at the time. Um, possibly winging the stone wall back into the property. So it looks more like an entrance. Rather than placing it back exactly where it was before, that seemed to be an option that would be agreeable to the commission and, and, um, and possibly reduce the chance that the stones will sink into the road when the snow pile goes by. But other than that, thank you for the opportunity to review the application.
So I guess the only thing that's not documented right now as far as, uh, met as a condition from the conservation commission would be the photo documentation. I, I guess that would be a, a condition.
On the stone wall?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. Uh, just a couple of points of, uh, to make sure we don't miss them. On every application we, we act on, we're supposed to have a vote on whether it's regional impact or not. So, um, I move that case 21-004-SUB does not have a regional impact.
A second.
Motion is second. Um, any discussion? Take a vote. Want to go backwards? Buzz?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you for that.
And then the other item is, uh, every time we get something that goes to the conservation commission is a, is an item. We have a thing in our subdivision regs that we're supposed to vote to either accept, I think, accept the comments, uh, or not. I'm trying to find that again.
I'll find the number.
Ed, do you know if by voting to accept them, that means that they would now need to ask for us to vote? If we didn't agree with any of them?
How about acknowledge rather than accept?
I'm sorry. It's a, I'm so sorry. It says, conservation commission may submit comments to the board regarding citing mitigation efforts. Comments shall be incorporated into the decision of the planning board unless specifically rejected by majority vote. So never mind. It does not require a vote to, they're automatically included unless we reject them.
Okay.
Dirk, do I have a couple of comments if you don't mind?
Yep, go ahead.
First, I did drive by this morning to see the trees flagged and I could, I, again, it'd been two weeks and I forgot how little you could see around that corner. So I do think this would be greatly improved by taking down that corner. And then my other thing was to agree with Mr. Berry about the, the 12 inch culvert, I think is adequate. He kind of beat me to it that the amount of the road that currently drains to this pipe is quite small and honestly could probably be handled by a smaller pipe, but I know that we tend to have minimum sizes. So I would, I would be in support of keeping with Mr. Berry's current design with the 12 inch pipe. I do think a 24 inch box culvert would be a little excessive in a residential driveway, especially in this, this case. I don't know if we need to vote. Is that just, we just kind of go forward with that? We just don't have the vote on it?
Well, I guess it goes back to Ed's description there. If we do not agree with, or we reject conservation commission's request for a 24 inch box culvert, we need to take a vote on that? We've never done that before, so, but I'm not saying that that's right or wrong.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's a, the subdivision regs, it's 15.3.6. Number two is the area. So I mean, it's easy enough to just go ahead and make a motion on it. So I'll move that we make a motion to allow for the, the 12 inch proposed culvert versus the 24 inch box culvert recommended by the conservation commission for case 004-SUB.
Yep, and I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just have a question on, maybe Susan might be able to answer that, you know, around the discussion of the box culvert. My, it's just an assumption for me that I, I would assume that conservation, you know, likes the box culverts because they're open for different types of wildlife. But I was wondering if that was what the discussion was about.
Um, Gary, yes, in part it was for wildlife passage, but also there was thoughts to increasing rain events. And why, and that was another consideration.
Thank you. And Sue, I do want to say that I think there's plenty of times that culvert, that, that consideration should be taken. It's just, in, in this particular case, when I look at this, it's, it's about 1,000 square feet that contribute to this pipe.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just, but I definitely, I do, I've driven by plenty of driveways in this town that the 12 inch pipe with about 400 feet of a hill coming down on it, but.
Yeah.
That was the reasoning for this one.
Yeah, and if disconnected wetlands, I would, different feeling about it as well.
Right, I agree.
Good for her.
Thank you. Let's have a vote on that. Buzz?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, so we got that passed. Any other comments on Mr. Berry's description of the items that we had asked him to take care of?
No, just to jump on what it said, it said about the, the cut there, you know, this is a scenic road. And it seems like the applicant is proposing a way to kind of honor the scenic features of the road, but also doing it in a way that's pretty responsible and actually improving the safety of the road in that section. So I think this is a good example of how that can be done in a way that maintains those scenic features, you know, responsibly.
Yeah, good point.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Joanna.
Yes.
Okay, I received a photo from the frontals of the stone wall. So just so you know that that has been submitted.
Okay. And remind me, are we, we are still in a public meeting or have I closed the public last meeting?
Think we left it open.
Okay, well, let, let me open the public meeting. And ask if there's any public that would like to speak about this case? I'll just ask again if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to, for or against this. Okay, seeing no action, I will close the public hearing. And bring it back to the board for a motion or a vote.
Mr. Chair, I just had one more, sorry, it's Mr. Veil. I had one more question. That was, I think we, I can't remember if we took action on it at the last meeting or made a final decision. So the, we usually require details about, you know, fire protection. I believe the fire chief had requested sprinklers, which I do not believe we can require in single family homes. We had asked about where the nearest cistern or dry hydrant is in location to this, and I don't know if that was ever identified.
I thought we talked it through at the meeting and there was one not that far away, but Mr. Berry, could you confirm that?
Yeah, it was discussed at the, the last hearing. It is, the closest one is at the next intersection down Deerfield. And I clocked it the other day and I believe it was three quarters of a mile to a mile. And it's, it's right here. I forget the name of that road.
Yeah, isn't there, isn't there a dry, there's a dry hydrant, right, on that stream?
Right, dry hydrant right here at Flutter. There's a, I forget the name of the river that comes through here. It starts with an E, I believe.
Yeah, Elliott River.
Elliott, that's right.
Yep.
So we're here on this corner and then dry hydrant is right here. So it's, you can almost see it from our project corner if that curve wasn't in the way.
Does that answer that, Ed?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think unless anyone else has anything else, I just got one more thing and then I would be prepared to make a motion.
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to throw out there, thank you, Mr. Berry, for putting together those driveway profiles. I know it's a little tedious, but I know it's important to make sure that there's no waivers needed. So with that, I'll make it a motion to approve case number 21-004-SUB. It really isn't, I guess, the standard, with standard conditions for plan recording and copies provided to the town.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Let's roll call that. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, let's move on to some of our other business at hand. Let me go back to the agenda. All right, so we have a conditional use permit application that has been drafted and circulated. And we are going to talk about that. I just want to see if people have had a chance to review that and are prepared to comment.
Mr. Chairman, this is Susan and I'm going to apologize. I have not yet looked at that.
Okay, let's, let's move it to the next meeting.
All right.
Joanna, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, put it on the agenda so we're all reminded to do that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I'll, actually Joanna, could you also put out an email, say, a week prior to remind people to review that? Thank you. And then let's, I guess, go around and see if anybody has any updates. Ian?
Nothing for me. I did print the permit to review. I just, I don't have time.
I have it up on my screen.
Um, do, I guess, only with that, I, I know we're going to probably discuss at the next meeting. I assume if we have some, whether it's formatting or some comments, just send that off to Joanna. Maybe she can compile anything beforehand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Ed, do you have anything?
Not this time, but I'm sure I'll come back to something.
I purposely wanted to bring you in early because I knew you'd come back with something. Let you think about it for a little bit. Stew on it. Susan, do you have anything?
Um, I just want to remind folks that we have our deliberative session this Saturday, both for the school warrant and for the town warrant.
Yeah, thanks for reminding everybody. Buzz, do you have anything?
All set.
Gary?
Nothing this time.
Ed again?
I think two things I had is I know the board of selectmen have been listing some, some townhold properties for sale through a realtor instead of going through the bid process. So I believe one is under contract, one, the USA, the formerly, former USA spring site, I believe, is now listed up for sale. And there's probably a few others that'll be popping back onto the, the tax rolls at some point. And then the other item I wanted to make sure, just to give a thanks up to, is there was a community trail cleanup by the town offices recently. I think the Parks and Rec Department, Courtney Doro and some others collaborated and set that up. So just a big thank you for anybody that was out there cleaning up the town, anybody that does that as part of their daily, daily things as well.
Great. Yep, thank you for mentioning that. Joanna, do you have anything? Steph?
I have two things actually. The first is SRPC is hosting their first resiliency roundtable meeting tomorrow. That is at 10 o'clock online and I am just about to send out a reminder email to everybody on our mailing list. If you have any interest in that, let me know and I can send you the registration link. And then SRPC is also hosting the first chat forum. So that's Communities for Healthy Aging and Transitions. And that will be on Monday, April 19th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And that, I believe, is with Northwood and Barrington as well. And we'll send out an email on that too, and I'll, I'll make sure to forward it to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I do have actually one last question I forgot to ask Joanna.
Go ahead, Ed.
Is, is there, I know was it Gary and Sue are up for reelection this year. Has there been a, anybody else that's placed their name on the ballot for that open spot?
I haven't seen any. The, the recent newsletter only, you know, showed two vacancies for one. Yeah, for, for, there's two, three year.
Oh, that's right. So the, the free space would have to be appointed, correct?
No, no, it would be voted in. So there's, there's three spots open in this election cycle. Two for three year and one for one year.
Gotcha.
Yep. But I don't think anybody signed up for that. So get out there, get your neighbors.
Start handing out flyers.
Yep. Okay, I don't have anything else. We have minutes and February 24th. I guess I'd ask if people had time to review those.
Yeah, I had gone through those and I know Ms. Mooney, I think it sent some, some revisions through and satisfied with the revised edited minutes that Joanna had distributed. So I will make a motion in one moment, but I have the date.
February 24th.
Thank you. It's Mr. Veal. I move, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 24th, 2021.
Second.
Thanks Buzz. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Vote on that. Ed?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Buzz?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. That brings us to the end of our meeting. So don't everybody race for it.
Move that we adjourn, Mr. Veal.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.